Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Public Hearing regarding the redistricting map proposed by the Redistricting Task Force. Before Mayor Parker calls the public hearing to order, we ask that you please take this opportunity to turn off all electronic devices. For those of you who have requested to speak, there are two podiums in the chamber. The podium in the back is for individuals with mobility concerns. We ask all other speakers to step forward to the front podium. Each podium has a countdown clock located to the speaker's right that will indicate how much time is remaining. When you have 30 seconds left, a bell will sound. When your time has ended, a second bell will sound and you should complete your comments. Before you begin your comments, please state your name and city of residence. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to this special public hearing regarding the redistricting maps sent over to us by the Redistricting Task Force. I'm going to call the meeting to order, and it looks like we're going to dive right into our public hearing portion with public commentary. There we go. I think our first caller, we couldn't get them on the phone, so we're going to go to our next caller, which is Pablo Calderon.
Mr. Calderon?
Yes, ma'am.
Please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yes, I am Pablo Fernandez Calderon, and I live in District Eight. Since Fort Worth is 35 percent Hispanic now, I believe District Two should be a strong Hispanic district, and a solid opportunity district should be drawn into South and Southeast. Fifty-one percent of Fort Worth's total growth was in Far North, east of Jacksboro and north of 820. Districts Five, Six, and Eight accounted for 32 percent of total growth, particularly beyond 820. Having two districts and shifting demographics, two extra districts and shifting demographics requires giving up some areas currently served. Map X, recommended by the Redistricting Task Force, drew two strong African-American districts and an opportunity district. A percentage in the mid-30s is judged strong due to good voter registration and turnout. Legal counsel described factors affecting Hispanics, including non-citizenship. I would add that we often come from countries with dictatorships or limited democratic participation. Detachment from the electoral process is a consequence. It's also a challenge to overcome. Only Map X and United Hispanic Council maps created a strong Hispanic district and two opportunity districts, each with District Two percentages in the upper 60s. Legal counsel said greater concentrations of Hispanics are generally required to create a probability of success. In Map V, District Two Hispanics are 64.3 percent, and in Map S, they were 64.8 percent. Neither received a strong rating. Removing Riverside from District Two creates a Hispanic percentage in the low 60s. Growth north of 820 will steadily dilute Hispanic numbers with a population that has greater economic resources. The South Side Hispanic community has asked to be separated from neighbors to the North and West in previous redistricting. It is not a rejection of any individual, rather a recognition that due to different socioeconomic characteristics, they are a separate community of interest. African-Americans and Hispanics have many mutual interests, especially economic. We share neighborhoods as Hispanics move into African-American areas, and many younger African-Americans move outward. I trust this council will help us find common ground and equity for both. Thank you.
Thank you, Pablo. Our next speaker is Tara Sally.
I am a resident of the Lake Como Community in Fort Worth. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Distinguished City Council, ladies and gentlemen of the council support staff. Thank you for the opportunity to share and express my concerns why Fort Worth should choose Map X Modified to be the city's redistricting map. I am a lifelong member of the Lake Como Community. I was born and raised in the community. After graduating from college, I returned back to my beloved community, bought a house, settled down, and raised my daughter in the same small knit community that nurtured and supported me as a youth. I say Como is small, but that's only in size. In my opinion, Como has a huge heart that runs deep with self-dignity, pride, hard work, fairness, and a strong belief in the Almighty God. As a community member, Como has always been represented by good district, dedicated district council, both past and present. Mr. Michael Crane has contributed that tradition. Thank you, Mr. Crane. Although we've had good city council representation, I stand here to explain why I feel Como must be placed in District Six. According to the independent study research, which was conducted by the Redistricting Task Force, Districts Five, Eight, and Six are strong minority-opportunity districts. Geographically, Districts Five and Eight are too far. Therefore, District Six is the best-suited ideal minority-opportunity district for Como because it offers Como the one person, one vote whereby each voter's vote matters. Regardless of who is seeking to be elected as the councilperson for District Six, he or she would have to have strongly solicit Como's vote. District Six VAP, the Voting Age Participation, has about 23.54 Hispanics, 35.2 whites, 32.63 blacks, and about .64 others, and that's with Como being added. Being a part of District Six with these diverse VAPs will allow Como a greater chance to be heard and to get our concerns met. We do look forward to working with our city council representatives in conjunction with the mayor and other local legislators in meeting the needs of our communities such as making sure our children are reaching their academic potential, prepared for transition into secondary education, able to leave high school job-ready, or college-bound. Being a part of a minority-opportunity district will assist Como in helping its seniors-
Thank you, Tara. I'm sorry to cut you off. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah Walker.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. We ask that you unite the Riverside community, a true geographical community of interest which cuts across all lines of racial, ethnic, and economic composition within one city council district. Y'all heard me say "one," right? We support Map X on any map that keeps Riverside together. We respectfully ask you to do the right thing and unite Riverside within one city council district. The addition of two city council districts represents us with the best opportunity we will have. Thank you so much for your consideration. I might ask you the question, does anybody on this council remember the Rock Island Bottom? No, you don't.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Our next speaker is Pastor Kenneth Jones.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and to our city manager Cook and to this esteemed city council. I stand, as Pastor Kenneth Jones Jr., the proud pastor of the Como First Missionary Baptist Church for the past 25 years. I stand before you because, Mayor, you put together an awesome Task Force 2.0 that brought together a recommendation for you all that Map X, Map X Modified, which would include Como Bridge moving into Six. We've been loyal as part of the Como community for some 25 years, and we have been faithful to District Three. That goes all the way back to when I came to this city and to the community 25 years ago with Jeff Wentworth. From Jeff Wentworth, it went to John Stevenson, from John Stevenson, Carter Bridette, Chuck Silcox, Zimmerman, Dr. Brian Byrd, and currently Michael Crane. And we have been loyal in that arena, but we've never been able to, after running qualified candidates, to win a council seat. Now we believe this is the chance that the council can get it right and do right by Como. Como is a proud community. It's a strong voting block precinct 1120. And though we have served faithfully and will continue to serve faithfully, we want to be free from Three, and we want to move into Six. We're grateful and thankful for that 911 vote that took place by the task force, and two of the individuals that live in District Six, Dr. Whitney Boyd, along with Ms. Linda Kennedy, voted that Como would be a part of that bridge. Only three communities will be affected by that bridge, that is Como, Sunset Heights, River Hills. We're asking that you allow Como's vote to matter. Because we have been loyal in this city, we do vote. We are strongly united, we are proud, and we are loud, and we have no issues with Three. We love Michael Crane. We just want to be free with an opportunity to be able to have our vote count so that we can be a part of a minority-opportunity district. We hope that you have the opportunity that you have to get it right. Thank you for allowing me the time.
Thank you, Pastor Jones. Our next speaker is a caller, Bruce Miller.
Yes?
Please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Bruce Miller here for Citizens for Independent Redistricting. Task Force member Kennedy rightly pointed out several times that the goal of the Redistricting Task Force, and now the city council, is to create the best district map for Fort Worth for the next decade. It doesn't matter who the author is, the process is not a competition among mapmakers. We have to recognize that the way things have worked in the past has left the Hispanic community severely underrepresented on the council. Similarly, because Como is an isolated minority district, it has little to no voice in city elections. Map X, the map selected by the task force, does a good job addressing the Hispanic concerns but does not address the Como problem, while the map submitted by the Como group placed it in the minority-opportunity district but ignored the Hispanic concerns. What is needed is a new map that addresses both issues simultaneously. Therefore, it was logical for the task force to select Map X with a recommendation that it be revised to connect Como with the newly designed District Six. At the final task force meeting on January 24th, staff computer Michelle, expert Michelle Swindle showed the task force one possible version of how this could be accomplished. Regardless of whether this is called heavy tweaking of Map X or something else entirely, that's what was recommended by a nearly unanimous vote, and that's what is needed. The lack of a process where mapmakers have to get together to create the best outcome is a fundamental weakness of the current approach and why we should have gone with an independent redistricting commission. That would have addressed all these issues at one time. Perhaps someday the city will wake up and smell the coffee. In the meantime, the council needs to respect the redistricting process it created and follow the complete recommendation of the task force. Finally, since this is supposed to be a transparent process, Ms. Swindle's maps need to be shared with the public on the Esri platform and the city webpage as one possible example of how this could work. Thank you for your attention.
Our next speaker is Susan Kenny.
Yes?
Please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Oh, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Parker and City Council. I'm Susan Kenny, President of the Parkland Neighborhood Association. Parkland and our surrounding neighborhoods, which include but are not limited to Parkwood Hill Estates, Heritage, Summerfields, and Fossil Creek, formed a multi-neighborhood working group to address this redistricting process. We represent approximately 60,000 residents. We are thankful that the map that the Redistricting Task Force recommended kept our individual communities intact and our larger community of interest that we've been advocating for together. We ask that the city council, as they continue through this process, keep our individual communities together and keep our larger community of interest together in one city council district. The population up here in the north, north of 820, is 270,000, which is 30 percent of the city's population. Please consider creating three city council districts north of 820 so that our needs and concerns can be duly represented. Thank you.
Our next speaker is also a caller, Jennifer Samuels. Okay, that's okay. Let's move to Cameron Cushman, who I think is here in person, and then we'll go back to Tim Petrus on the phone. That's okay. Okay.
Thank you. I know this is a very challenging redistricting effort. I would not want to be in your shoes. This is extremely difficult to try to get populations right, neighborhoods right, but I want to just advocate on behalf of not splitting up Tanglewood, Overton Park, and West Cliff. My parents still live in the house I grew up in in West Cliff. I had my maternal grandparents also live in West Cliff. My paternal grandparents lived down in Tanglewood. And despite, you know, what it looks like on a map with, if you just look at the roads with Hewland and Bel Air, you know, it looks like it's really easy to kind of chop up in those particular neighborhoods, but those neighborhoods are really connected. And what's easy to miss on those maps is the park and the trails that run through this entire neighborhood from Foster Park all the way down to Stone Gate, and those communities are really connected. Our kids play together. They play together in the park. They connect with each other, and I just, I want to make sure that we get to stay in District Three and get to stay together as a community. The second thing I want to mention, too, is that it was a much-needed change, but with Overton Park Elementary being built, that kind of split our neighborhood in half. And I have kids that live in the neighborhood, and their friends were split in half, their sports teams were split in half. We didn't see the parents anymore because they went to a different elementary school. We also have the school district. The Pascal Pyramid is split between three different school board members, and that's difficult when it's hard to have your representation split up like that. So from a guy who grew up in the neighborhood, whose parents are still in the neighborhood, let's try to keep those neighborhoods together because the neighborhood bonds are stronger than just what it looks like on a map and just the way the roads are drawn. Thank you.
Thank you, Cameron. Okay, we're going to go back to Ms. Samuels. I think we've got her on the phone.
Yes?
Please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Jennifer Samuels. I am the Secretary of the Heritage Homeowners Association. Heritage is a community of over 3,200 homes and approximately 12,000 residents in District Four and north of Fort Worth. Heritage is a diverse, well-engaged, and active community. We appreciate that we were able to register as a community of interest and that our community is whole in the proposed redistricting map. Heritage, along with Parkland, Summerfields, Fossil Creek, and more, formed a multi-neighborhood working group to share our common thoughts regarding the redistricting process. This larger community of interest, representing some 60,000 residents, located roughly between the borders of I-35, Golden Triangle Boulevard, 377, and Western Center, share common interests and goals. We're thankful that the map that the Redistricting Task Force recommended preserves our larger community of interest for which we continue to advocate. We hope that the city council, as they continue through this process, keeps Heritage as well as the larger shared community of interest within a single council district. Thank you.
You want me to go to a person, someone here in person, or is Tim on the phone? Okay, perfect. Our next speaker is Blake Jordan.
I don't know if you want to show it or not, but it doesn't really matter. Good afternoon. My name is Blake Jordan, and my wife and I live at 5449 Night Sage Lane in River Hills Phase Three as part of the Fort Worth community. When we moved to North Texas, we originally did not live in Fort Worth. I did work downtown, though, and as we made personal and business friends, as our kids went through Montessori school, as we joined clubs and volunteered, we found a shared community in Fort Worth. My wife and I wanted to be a part of that firm community and build a house in River Hills. That community, or as the city defines it, a community of interest, consisted of friends, of colleagues, of neighbors who we shared schools with, people we volunteered with, Little League teams, stores we shopped at, restaurants we frequented. That was Colonial Hills, Tanglewood, Overton Woods, Overton Park, and this newest addition of River Hills. This is where we chose to make our home. As the city pursues its redistricting effort, I applaud the tenants set forth to the commission as high priority, and I commend the effort to keep communities of interest together. As such, my neighbors and I cannot support any map that would separate River Hills from our community of interest. I encourage the commission, the city council, the mayor, to continue their pursuits representing Fort Worth, and I stand strongly by this stated mission. Per the webpage, the redistricting webpage, keeping communities of interest together is an important principle of redistricting, and at the recommendation of the Redistricting Task Force, city council has adopted Resolution 5375-04-2021, which establishes communities of interest as a high priority criterion for redistricting. This sentiment is shared with the vast majority of my Phase Three neighbors. In the last four days, we've gathered 91 signatures committed to opposing any map that separates River Hills Phase Three from our community of interest. Of completed homes in our phase, a vast majority support staying in our community of interest. Furthermore, this is a true grassroots effort that sprang up organically. My neighbors and I are wholly committed and dedicated to the aforementioned resolution that establishes communities of interest as a high priority criterion for redistricting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. We're going to go back to Mr. Petrus on the phone.
Mr. Petrus?
Yes?
You're on the line with council.
Good evening, Mayor Parker and members of the council. My name is Tim Petrus. I reside at 3736 Country Club Circle in the Colonial Hills neighborhood. I'm speaking today to address my concern about the current proposed redistricting map. By way of background, I have served in the past as president of the Candle Ridge Homeowners Association and president of the Fort Worth League of Neighborhood Associations. One of the most important deadlines in the current redistricting process was maintaining communities of interest. The current map, as I understand it, will split portions of Overton from Tanglewood and from our neighborhood. These neighborhoods share parks, schools, and the good and bad impacts of TCU sporting events and other activities, and they certainly qualify as communities of interest and should be kept together. Thank you for your time and for your service to the city.
Thank you, Mr. Petrus. Our next speaker is Sylvia Alcala.
When I signed up to speak, I said I would have handouts. It's a copy of a map, so that I'll just share it with everyone. Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and present my thoughts today. My name is Sylvia Alcala, and my husband and I reside at 4101 Cloudvale Terrace in River Hills Phase Three in Fort Worth. I'm an active member of the Fort Worth community. Currently, I serve as, on the Fort Worth Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and previously have served on the Board of Directors for Trinity Metro and the Fort Worth Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. So I love my city. As my neighbor, Mr. Jordan, mentioned, one of the task force's high priority criteria for redistricting is to contain communities of interest in a single district. So that's what my comments are centered around today. One of the maps that you've been asked to consider, as we know we've been speaking about today, would greatly impact my neighborhood. Specifically, I'm referring to the map that would separate River Hills Phase Three and the future Phase Four from the rest of River Hills and from our neighbors in Overton Woods, Overton Park, Tanglewood, Colonial Hills, and the Clearfork area. We are a part of a group of neighborhoods that has shared needs and interests that are similarly affected by government action, and that's where things are key to me. We're affected by things like decisions about schools and parks and infrastructure and economic development. In other words, we are a community of interest. So for those of you who may not be familiar, that's what the map is for. I provided a high-level map of the River Hills and Clearfork area, and by the way, you can find this online at riverhills1848.com. And I've included reference also to the Clearfork area because River Hills and Clearfork are very closely connected in development and economics and community activities. So, and as you can see where it's situated, we're talking about the part that, the community that is, lies between Hewland and Bryant Irving and bordered by Vickery on the north and Highway 183 to the south. So River Hills is a neighborhood that is being developed in five phases, as you know, and to date, three of them have been developed. We're in Phase Three. Phase Four will be directly across the street from us, and we, Phases Three and Four run along Bryant Irving, and that's specifically the portion of River Hills that is proposed to be split out, carved out, from District Three and moved into District Six. But the issue is that we are a single unit. We are a single neighborhood. We're a single HOA. Our kids go to school together. They attend Overton Park, McLean, and Pascal together. We work out at Overton Park. We go meet our neighbors for coffee at Clearfork on Saturdays. We share these interests. We share the interest in infrastructure and development, so much of it that is happening here recently, and we just ask that you consider our community of interest.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you. Our next speaker is Joe Guerrero.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Joe Guerrero, and I'm the president for the Worth Heights Neighborhood Association. We totally oppose getting out of the, or leaving the District Nine. We appreciate that y'all would consider us and keeping us in District Nine. We have a real strong city council person that work with us, and hopefully that, I know that, I know she will continue helping us. So live and let live. We've been there a long time. I've been there in Worth Heights for decades. I was going to say years, but I better not. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Connie Medina. Is Connie here?
No.
Okay, thank you. Victoria Vargas?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Victoria Vargas, and I live in District Nine, and that is where I would like for my neighborhood, Worth Heights, to remain. No one is saying no to an opportunity district, but we are saying that Worth Heights prefers to remain in District Nine. We've always been able to work with our elected representatives, starting with Ken Barr when he was a councilman, and all the way up to Elizabeth Beck. And I will say that we have been able to accomplish much for our neighborhood, from the Model Box program to having a community center built and everything in between. And isn't that what it's all about? Working together to get things done. I sincerely hope we can continue to do what is best for our neighborhood, and in turn, that will be best for the city we all love. I believe that Worth Heights is best served by remaining in District Nine. We're not a huge neighborhood. I doubt that we would make much of an impact on the sprawling District Eleven, but the impact that not remaining in District Nine would be tremendous. So, please, help you hear me, and we'll do what you can to see that Worth Heights remains in District Nine. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Laura Rios.
Thank you.
Lucretia Powell. Is Lucretia here?
I've come before you two today as a citizen of Fort Worth. Map X was not a unanimous vote by the redistricting task force. Map X does not create a cohesive process considering all interests citywide. The biased, quantified schemes of the VAP percentage to create a Hispanic district on the backs of African America, African Americans, is political racist. The redistricting map should be one that represent the city of Fort Worth as a whole, not off the backs of any ethnicity, race. It was stated before, considering any changes to the initial map, the city council will conduct a public hearing. If the city council has made any request changes to the map before this meeting, it continues to show the lack of integrity in the city of Fort Worth. Many residents have stated their community of interest all over the city. At the same time, North Fort Worth has grown, as Mayor Parker has stated in her podcast, 76 percent. District Eleven would represent very well in North Fort Worth. Many citizens all over the city of Fort Worth community of interest have requested several things and voiced their opinions and plea. But at the end of the day, this is not about, this is not about Como. This is not about North Fort Worth, East, South, West. This is about the city of Fort Worth and would, and what would take place and continue for the next 10 years. So, I ask you, city council, the people have, the citizens have chosen you as their representative. I ask you that you will come together and present a map to the city of Fort Worth.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. We appreciate it. Paul Kerpo is our next speaker, and I probably mispronounced your name, Paul.
Paul Kerpo, Fort Worth. I'd like to talk a little bit about Handley. Handley was founded in 1876 when Texas and Pacific brought the rail service to Tarrant County. It remained a small, isolated community for about 70 years. In 1946, it was annexed by the city of Fort Worth, and at that point grew rather rapidly, becoming one of the largest neighborhoods in the city. Then, in the 1960s, the state built a freeway around the city of Fort Worth. At that time, Tarrant County was largely rural. Most of the freeway went through farmland and private property, undeveloped property. On the east side, however, it went through Handley. Hundreds of homes were bulldozed, and our community was split in two. Despite that, 60 years later, people on both sides of 820 consider ourselves residents of Handley. We work together as a community that's been helped by being part of one council district. Many of the maps submitted for your review, including the one developed by this council, utilize that section of 820 to divide two council districts. Please don't split Handley. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rick Herring.
Good afternoon, Mayor Parker, council members. Rick Herring, 1801 Bolton, Fort Worth. I'm the moderator for the Riverside Alliance, which is a coalition of seven neighborhood associations in the Riverside community, and we were the first neighborhood alliance in the city, and we've been around since 1995. Thank you for listening to Riverside throughout this process, and I promise I won't repeat everything you've heard over and over from us during this process, in previous meetings and correspondence. But as we have expressed before, a majority of Riverside residents would like to be unified within one city council district, since we have been divided up among three council districts since 1977, and that's, you know, going on 50 years, and it's hampered our community in many ways, although, as the person from Como said earlier, we've had great city council reps, still do, but being unified in one city council district will further the goals of our neighborhood. With the addition of two city council districts, as Ms. Sarah Walker said earlier, we feel this is the best opportunity we'll ever have to achieve this objective. The task force recommended map, Map X, meets our objectives and does unite Riverside in one city council district. Likewise, the map that city council recommended to the task force last fall also meets our objective. Whichever final map you decide on, and we realize you've still got decisions to make on that, we respectfully ask that you keep Riverside unified within one city council district. And I just want to say, while I have the opportunity, the, to give a shout out to the staff during this whole process, well over a year, it has been a good process for citizens. It's been transparent, seems to be the buzzword. I can't imagine a more transparent process than this, and anyone in the city of Fort Worth who says they don't know about it or haven't known about it doesn't pay very much attention. So, thanks to Fernando Costa, Michelle Goot, Leanne Guzman, Michelle Swindle, all the others, and you shouldn't start naming names because there's been a myriad of people, but thank you to all of them and to all of you for establishing such a good process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Our next speaker is Joanne Viola.
I'm a Fort Worth resident in Overton Park, and I would like to thank the mayor and the council for your service to our city, and I would also like to thank the redistricting task force for undertaking this difficult and important task. And I am currently the parks chairperson for Overton Park Neighborhood Association, and I'm the former president of the Overton Park Neighborhood Association. As you may be aware, Overton Park community was developed along Overton Park Creek in the 1960s and has been a community of interest with Foster Park, Tanglewood, and Tanglewood neighborhoods throughout the many years. Together, we've developed the Overton Park Improvement Master Plan that's on record in the city, and we've adopted medians on Healan and Arberlon and Bel Air Drive. We share five K-12 public schools, and we also conduct and fund our yearly Fourth of July parade together, all three communities, and participate in joint Overton Park and Tanglewood Elementary School turkey trots. We collaborate with park cleanups, and we benefit from many joint communications with the city. We stand with the president of the Tanglewood NA and our District Three councilmen that Tanglewood, Overton Park, and Foster Park need to remain together in one district and as a cohesive community going forward. As you may already know, the proposed redistricting map would sever the Tanglewood and Overton Park neighborhoods in half along an interior residential street that was arbitrarily established during the 2008 gas lease days along Ranchview Road. So, we understand that one of the top priorities of the task force is to keep our communities of interest together. We sincerely ask that you consider our request to keep Tanglewood, Overton Park, and Foster Park neighborhoods together, and we thank you all for your consideration of this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dan Hayes.
My name is Dan Hayes, and I live in Central Meadowbrook in East Fort Worth. I serve as the vice president of our neighborhood association, which is part of the neighborhoods of East Fort Worth Alliance. Last June, the alliance submitted a community of interest to be considered as part of the redistricting process. Our main concern is we want to be all in one district, not three, as currently configured. We submitted our community of interest right after the Riverside Alliance submitted theirs, which was before there was even a process in place for the city to receive them. Our community of interest includes 19 neighborhoods in the alliance and was under the target population by about 15,000. Show that next slide. Here's what we submitted. Throughout this process, I watched with interest the various permutations of maps, hoping I would eventually see one that honored our effort to become part of one council district, but none has. Go ahead and advance it. Here's where it stands today. I'm sorry for the poor quality of the map, but that's what's available. We're still represented by three city council districts. As I mentioned, I live in Central Meadowbrook, which is a fairly square and compact neighborhood, but as this next map shows, we're represented not by one, not two, but three city council districts in our little neighborhood. While this might seem advantageous, and generally, our representatives have been helpful, it is very confusing for the residents in our neighborhood. We're basically on the fringes of these three districts, and before any leadership can help us, or before any of us in leadership can help a neighbor, we first have to research which district they're in. The map under consideration is a slight improvement. Now, Central Meadowbrook is in just two districts. I think we can do better. District boundaries should make sense, such as rivers, creeks, rebel tracks, and neighborhood borders. Our community of interest did just that, and no neighborhood should be divided into two city council districts when it's a little square. I'd like to see our community of interest reflected in the final map as one district, but as a minimum, I'd like to see Central Meadowbrook be in one district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Our next speaker is Naomi Dillard.
I'm not a great speechwriter. This is just from my heart. My name is Naomi Dillard. I reside at 3501 Primrose Avenue. My husband and I live in Fort, have lived in Fort Worth for about 18 years. Most of that time, we have lived on Primrose. I'm very involved with the Carter Riverside Neighborhood Association. As CRNA members, we have attended different city-town hall meetings and asked for a variety of different needs. The Riverside Recreation Center is so small and old that it needs to be remodeled or added on to. There is only one room that is suitable for a meeting of 50 people. We have a scheduling problem quite frequently. We have a monthly meeting that runs from 6 until 8:00 p.m., but forget about getting into the room early to decorate or to set up. Our pool was demolished, yes, years ago. Our Player Christmas equipment is old and needs to be added to or redesigned to accommodate more children at a time. We would like to have a pool or a splash pad for the community to enjoy in the heat of the summer. We have been to and asked the city what Riverside will be getting with the bond money or the money that is available through the Neighborhood Improvement Strategy that has built new pools and new recreation centers elsewhere. They said that Riverside isn't getting any money because we are not the worst in the city. We are also not the best in the city, where there is money with all the new growth. We're in the middle, and we don't make enough noise, the squeaky wheel noise. If we don't have all of our Riverside neighbors in one council district, how can we have one big footprint or a big enough voice so we can work together and run one direction? Riverside hasn't been in one council district since 1977. Please give us... Please give us our united voice back. We need Riverside to be in one district. Please stand with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dillard. We appreciate you. Our next speaker is Frances Look.
I'm Frances Look at 1024 Lilac Street, and I've been a member of District Nine for 19 years, in Ms. Beck's district now, which we are thrilled about. I'm here to voice my support for the modified map X that includes the bridged Como. Although I've been in Fairmount for 19 years, I grew up in Arlington Heights. Como is right there where I lived all my life and was very involved in that whole neighborhood. I also support the Hispanic district on, for the South Side, because we have a lot of Hispanics in that area that need representation. And of course, I'm like everyone else. I don't want District Nine messed with. I love my district. I love my neighbors. I love working very closely with all of the surrounding neighborhoods. So, we're hoping you'll leave District Nine the same. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you, Frances. Our next speaker is Mitch Reitman. Is Mitch here? Next speaker is Russell Fuller. I think it's on a phone.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I'm Rusty Fuller. I live in the city of Fort Worth, and I'm here today representing the 54,000-plus residents of the North Fort Worth Alliance and as an active member of the multi-neighborhood working group. As you listen to the input from speakers before beginning your task to develop a redistricting map that will shape Fort Worth for the next 10 years, the North Fort Worth Alliance encourages you to keep foremost in your thoughts and actions... the North Fort Worth Alliance encourages you to keep foremost in your thoughts and actions the hours of analysis of data, public input, public maps, and input from consultants that was done by the task force to come to the recommendation of an initial map. We urge you to focus on all the task force recommendations that you endorsed for use in developing the maps as you consider changes to the initial map. We have spoken several times about the importance of neighborhoods and keeping them together. Our position is that this factor is important, whether they have registered as a community of interest, as the multi-neighboring, its other entities, or simply homeowners associations. The reason we believe this to be important is that our experience is that issues that eventually rise to the level of consideration by the council start in the neighborhoods or groups of neighborhood. Neighborhoods have been an integral part of the history of Fort Worth and should remain so. Our presentation would be remiss if we didn't point out that the far north has grown to over two-hundred, to over two-hundred-and-seventy thousand people and is far from done. There are vast tracts of open land, both inside city boundaries and in the ETJ, that are being gobbled up in developments of hundreds to thousands of homes or in large apartment complexes. In keeping with the one-person-one-boat principle, we encourage you to leave room to grow in the prime growth areas of far north, the far west, and the far south. You have several responsibilities to balance in this process. The most important responsibility is to the strong, vibrant, thriving future of this great city of Fort Worth.
Thank you, Rusty. Danielle Strauss is our next speaker. Danielle here. Next speaker then is Leon Reed.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. I'd like to remind some and inform others that when West Fort Worth was frontier, Como was there and voting. When much of North Fort Worth was wilderness, Como was already there and voting. And when Clear Fork was cow pasture, Como was there and voting. Redistricting is not about potholes. It's about people. It's not about money. It's about mattering. And it's not about political self-preservation. It's about the public's validation. One man, one vote. That is the very foundation of our great democracy. And what we are seeking as citizens of Como is for our votes to matter. Oh, how auspicious it is that the future of Como is being addressed in Black History Month. For our history is being determined right now. Downtown Fort Worth knows who we are. Downtown Fort Worth knows that we are not a fearful people. God has not given us a spirit of fear but of power. Downtown Fort Worth knows that we are a determined people, and we are determined to be treated equally and to matter. That is why Como must be moved to District Six, where our voices will continue to be heard, and the city leadership must continue to address our needs. Anything short would be further indication that the city is not wanting all of its citizenry engaged in the voting process. The next time we address redistricting, children that are currently in the womb of mothers, expectant mothers, will be third or fourth graders, and everyone in here will be ten years older. And Como will not be left to wander in the wilderness for another ten years. We encourage you to give strong consideration to the modified map X that should have been put before the council already. And if it hasn't been, we will make sure that you're fully aware of it by the next time we convene and meet. Our purpose here is at the root of what we call America, voting and being heard in a democracy. And if we are to continue to remain in District Three, no representative from that district would have to come see Como about anything. And Como has already taken the hit on the statewide level when Como got moved from District Ninety to District Ninety-nine, where we have very little things in common demographically. So I'm again asking this council to think on one man, one vote. In District Six, every ethnic group and demographic would have the opportunity to matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Our next speaker is a caller, Paul Wilson.
Yes? Thank you. Thank you, council members, for hearing me. My name's Paul Wilson. I'm the president of the Stone Glen and Fossil Creek HOA, and speaking with support of my fellow sixty-two hundred neighbors in Fossil Creek. All of our communities in this area, Fossil Creek and then north and northeast, all of our leaders have gotten together to form a multi-neighborhood working group representing the diverse residents in North Fort Worth. It's important to us that our neighborhoods remain in the same representation, District of Fossil Park, Summerfield, Park Glen, all of which share similar sheet relating to development, emergency services, and transportation. We are functionally one large community and organized as such, and submitted a request to recognize this community of interest previously. Thanks for hearing me. Have a great day.
And I believe Mitch Reitman is here now. Mitch, come on up.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Mitch Reitman. I live at thirty-eight oh-five Trellis Eggs Road in District Three. I also own an office building on Woodway Drive in District Six. My parents' house is District Three, and after twenty years sent in the county just east of here, I returned to raise my son in Fort Worth, and I'm glad I did. District Three and District Six consist of great neighborhoods, and I'm glad to have my office in District Six. I'm here tonight because the issues in District Six are not the same as District Three. I'm a board member in the Overton Park Neighborhood Association, and we, along with other neighborhood associations in District Three, spend a lot of time addressing quality of life issues in our district. While quality of life in our neighborhood is focused on traffic, infrastructure, parks, and noise from the TCU campus, quality of life around my office is more focused on code compliance, crime from game rooms, crime in and around vacant buildings, and lack of neighborhood interests. Now, don't get me wrong. District Six, in Wakewood, where my office building is located, is a great area town, but the current residents of Tanglewood, River Hills, Overton Park, and other neighborhoods are very active and have a long record of working with the city to develop parks, educate our neighbors on crime prevention, and resolve traffic and noise issues. Separating Overton Park and River Hills from Tanglewood and other neighborhoods in District Three, moving us to District Six, would be detrimental to the improvements that we've worked towards for years. Thank you.
Last one. Okay. Ricardo Avita.
Mr. Avisha? Yes, ma'am. You are on the line with council. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, and good afternoon, council members and city of Fort Worth residents. My name is Ricardo Avita. I'm a resident of the Fort Worth, and I am calling to speak in favor of the redistricting map X. The city of Fort Worth has two good-looking maps, with map X and map Z, which the redistricting task force has effortlessly worked on for quite some time. And it would be really a waste of time on everyone's behalf, resources, and finances if we did not choose one of the top two maps set forth by the redistricting task force. Again, this is Ricardo Avita, and I'm strongly in favor of map X, and thank you for your time and attention.
Okay, I'm making sure. Do we miss anybody? No? Cameron. He's here. Come on down, Cameron.
Thank you all. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, city manager, and council members. My name is Cameron Johnson. I'm twenty-three years old and a lifelong member and product of the Como community. I also represent today the young adults in the community and the ever-growing group, and the ever-growing group of Como men called Legacy. Let me start by thanking you for your time here today, as this is something that is not only important to us as Comoites, but something that is equally important to the city as well as its future. You have an important task ahead of you, no doubt, but the goal is straightforward, to redistrict a city that has seen exponential amounts of growth in not only population but in diversity. One thing, though, remains the same: Como is and will hopefully always be a voting powerhouse. During my long, 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 twenty-three years on this earth, I have seen many things, but I have yet to see these two. The first, unsurprisingly, is the Dallas Cowboys win a Super Bowl, and the second is Como not getting out to vote. Como historically has been a voting powerhouse, but we have yet to elect in our current district seat a viable Comoite candidate or that of a majority-minority representing this city. I, under the leadership of attorney Leon Reed, was tasked with the very fun task of being the Como map builder, and I can confidently say that after this process is over, I may not want to see another map for another twenty-three years, but being the map builder has opened up my eyes geographically to the way this city works. That is why, when the leaders and community members gathered together to begin this long and daunting process, it was quickly obvious that the most viable and ethical move for the Como community was to be connected to District Six. By drawing a bridge connecting Como to District Six, we were not looking to make a pretty or easy-on-the-eyes map. We were looking to make a map that would finally benefit Como and the voting presence we bring. Not to mention that it passed the integrity test and was found legally by Bickerstaff to be one hundred percent legal. This move is also important because it will ensure that the people of the Como community have a voice, Como that have a voice. Como has historically always showed up to vote, but if we're being honest, in our current district, it has really had little impact. Como has endorsed and presented many viable candidates for this district seat, but because of the overwhelming different views surrounding us, we have had little success. That's why moving Como into District Six is the best option for us in this city. And although we have never had a council member elected that was selected or endorsed by the Como community, we continue our long tradition of always having a great relationship with our district council member. That's because Como is and has always been a community of opportunity and hope and a community of chances and new opportunities.
Thank you, Cameron. Appreciate you. Thank you. So I'm just going to confirm. I think that's the last of our speakers, but I'm looking at everybody. Yes? Okay, perfect. And we do have, just for the public's knowledge, we have a series of comment cards that were also submitted that we can carefully see here as well that our council members received. And with that, I think, I'm looking at my council members. So I can't, based on, Leon, you want to speak to your email earlier today. This is not really meant for public comment, period. I hate for that, to feel that way from the public. This was really meant for each of you to speak to us, but Leon, go ahead. You're turned off. Do you need to borrow mine?
Yeah, no, it's on. Yes, today's meeting was for the council to hear from the public, and the council will have a meeting next Tuesday at which they can share their opinions and views and begin deciding on a map to take to the next four public hearings.
Perfect. Thank you. And with that, council, we're adjourned for forty-five minutes, and we'll come back for our adjournment meeting. Thank you.